Yeah, I should probably tell.
That's one of the greatest things that comes out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, you're first. I don't do that. No. Yeah, I should probably tell. Yeah, I wasn't sure if I needed to. They held a special meeting last Thursday for like, like that. Really, but you can do it.
We really want to hear what you have.
Then you have to the right way, so.
Yeah.
Could ever know too much. I think, you know, like how this, how do we add to ninety-four million dollars? That's. I don't get, I don't want to be too.
Today is Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. I would call this meeting of the Auburn City Council of Order, Mr. Porter, who's called the role.
For I call the role tonight as well, I'll let everybody know. We're on like our backup live streaming system, so we are live streaming tonight through YouTube, through that camera over there, but. If you were wondering why there was a slightly different setup. Got the camera pointed radio counselor Ken, so we'll serve counselor Ken.
Here.
Counselor Overstreet Wilson.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Here.
Here, we stand in joint, we hold allegiance. What allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands on a nation under Adam indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Keep your name standing for a moment, please, I would like to talk to you. Thank you. Now, students. We are supposed to hear.
At this point in time, we will open up, we heard, portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record, so please keep remarked the three minutes or less. And please observe calmly except the rules of courtesy and inform.
Thank you, as everybody wishing to hear this evening. Johnson.
Good evening, the mayor and council. Elise Smith Johnson, I'm from Elise's Code of Independence, basically once we meet, just he should hear in court. It was exactly ten weeks ago that I stood here to remind you of your pledge to service for those who elected you into your positions. Echoing the words of Dr. King and his issuance of that, and the issuance of that promissory service to the people of Auburn. Although the wheels of justice, as we know, change much slowly for those at the end of inheriting that. Brutal and traumatic history of marginalization and systemic racism, there is still hope. There's still hope for this city and the people of Auburn. And that hope breeds excitement about the upcoming initiative for training of our city's computers of the community impact. And language, community impact of language and engagement under a common understanding. This is the work of what we call good trouble. My hope, and I dare say that the community's hope, is that you and every fellow attendance, these trains and series of trainings will lead all the way in. And be still in every uncomfortable space, remaining open because this work is uncomfortable. I'd like to remain uncomfortable and to be further accountable to this work of good trouble. In spaces where black folk don't come to you to hold you accountable. We know change is revolutionary, and these historic moves in Auburn must not be wasted, so that when the history of history's hometown is read. You will, we will, I will, will find ourselves on the right side of righteousness. Our present and our future deserves no foolishness. So once again, I charge you, I charge you to continue the work, I charge you to be courageous. I charge you to remain committed even when it's uncomfortable, and why you might wonder. Our committee deserves and expects this type of leadership from each and every. Thank you.
Thank you. There anybody else wishing to hear this evening? Mr. Bishop.
Good evening, my name is Andy Bishop, eighty-four, three A M, Auburn, New York. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public here at home. As you may know, I was over at the sun meeting. Your friend there from Cornell, he put a little bug minder. Stable isotope analysis. Ever hear that before? And I thought I was pretty smart, you know. And he clued me in, you see, we kind of find out exactly where all the phosphorus and the nitrogen is coming, and possibly right down to the last rock in the Poseidon traces. It only costs about five hundred dollars. And we haven't done this, I've never even heard of this, I thought that very odd. Very, very odd, but I went to the meeting the other night there, and I asked their, you know, the D E C, they were there too, you know, what about rabid and rapping cheating? Don't go back and treat it, switch it to us, like doing with the butter, with respect to drinking water supplies. Well, they called, you know, unclouded accusations, but he's going to take it up with his boss. Doesn't matter. I'm going to pay that five hundred dollars, I'm going to test that water, and find out who the real culprits are. Now, whether or not it's the farmers, or the people, the moomos, and the fertilizer, wild animals living in the woods, and the fish. Come to the last person. So I just want to let you know, I'm glad I, out of my own pocket, I'm going to spend that money, and we're going to find out who the real culprits are. Oh, I know in the past, they used to kill the bearer of bad news, but you know what? If I'm the bad guy, at least I did something. I went out and out of my own pocket, found out where the problem lies. Whether or not you want to accept that information, the EPA uses it to catch the looters. I, I don't think anybody's going to discount this finance, this lab. Just wanted to let you know, I'm going to go back home and get back to work. But I just wanted to say thank you again for your time, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public here at home. And I wanted to remind you, that water is not going to be drinkable very soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. So anybody else wishing to hear this evening? Dr. Even.
Is this Mike okay? Okay, says I'm fine. My name's Walt Aikman, I live at seventeen Liberty Street. As always, I thank you and council for. Uh, giving your time for this job, I know you don't always get a lot of thanks and appreciation, but I want to thank you. And the city departments and the volunteers for helping us plant a bunch of trees. With our project, the partnership we call Grow Auburn's Trees last Saturday, November second. Um, you authorized the expenditures. And without that, and the help of the Department of Public Works, the volunteers couldn't do what we accomplished. Christina Selvick was there documenting all the thirty volunteers. Every age group you can think of. Because we're hopeful that most of the trees that we planted are eligible for reimbursement. But um, think about these folks at DPW, they don't, they don't get a lot of accolades very often, but Mike Talbot. Uh, has embraced this program from the very beginning and working with Jason Brown and Rich Siemens and his crew. They made the work we did that day possible and very easy. We, volunteers were divided up into two groups led by Leah and Ben. And we planted over fifty trees in about two hours. Um, one of the routes, we asked the families with kids to go on because. Uh, in the, in those neighborhoods and on those particular streets, we thought that it was mostly the traffic, it's the traffic, right? We, we said, you know, the little kids should go in that group because we figured the traffic won't be as bad. And in the other group, uh, you know, the traffic might have been a little hairier, the tree lawns a little narrower, so we thought the adults. Uh, could do okay. Um, and, you know, we feel safe doing this, especially because um. We were closely with you and your colleagues, especially the city managers, colleagues in the departments, to be sure that we're doing it in a safe way. And I know in the back of my mind that if I had to call the fire department, I had to call the police department, they would come and they would help us. And I interact with the police department on a fairly regular basis, not just because, hey, I was going too fast on North Street. But because I have a question. You know, what do we got to do? Hit this parking meter with a hammer to get it to work? And then, of course, when they come over, it works perfectly. Um, I called them up when something is of concern of mine in the neighborhood, and I found them always to be courteous and helpful. And I think the police officers could benefit from more of the social interaction we had. With the community with these summer meetings we used to have with Bill Berry. And Aduna, we called it getting to know you, and until last summer, we met for years to get to know each other. So I'd like to make sure that our police officers, these men and women, should get some encouragement for, for stepping forward and learning how to handle their discomfort. In the constructive way that I was mentioning a few minutes ago. You may not know, but a New York State Parks employee died fighting fires in California. Last few weeks. We are fighting fires in New York State, and I've talked to the fire chief before about concerns about this. Governor Hokel has implemented a no burn policy for now, so we're going to have to look at this very carefully in the future. Good night.
Somebody else wishing to hear this evening? Close the public theater. We have a meeting minutes from November seventeenth, thousand, twenty-four. Very helpful, so the rule.
Yes.
Lord, Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy. Counselor Clarkville.
Hi.
Mayor. Hi, Karen. City manager's report.
Mayor. And R I P for the facilitator for community dialogue was published and. Four responses were received as of yesterday, which was the, for responses. Received those four responses, and we will be assembling a review committee to support those proposals and recommendations, also. Which can, to the council members for interest and. Participate in that review process. We also have currently our R I P for dog control, handling services. Uh, those responses occurred back December twelfth, or innovation is available in the city of the page. Yesterday, Jenny Haynes and I attended the Central New York Regional Economic Development Council's regular meeting, circus. And a couple of dates on construction projects, C D V G sidewalk program is currently wrapping up, the last four. Wasco Street is slated to occur tomorrow. And the restoration of adjacent properties, either side of sidewalks in that area. Will be addressed next week. Uh, the next step along the way, the sidewalk program will be cruise. Well, the city addressing tilted up slabs, so there's some that are obvious, more obvious than others, but. Definitely yeah, for us, so. Spreading locations for repairs, although happy, what it permits moving forward. And uh, last week and earlier this week, the demolition of two residential properties occurred. Number fifteen, Granton Street, and number twenty-two, Parker Street. Which uh, were evaluated and determined to be beyond reasonable. Like a fair. Torn down and. If it has not already been done, maybe our. May, big, large, ready to see. We'll address those in later days for what's in the technical space.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, sir? Any questions, members of council?
I have a quick question about the demo. Um, I know we talked about. Maybe these properties, want to put an example of. Ones that we could go into and check to see if there were, was any reuse for any of the materials inside of it, is it something that?
Yeah, that's, that's still all ready to tie our bind, we get into some of these demos. Uh, but. Be them safe structures. Structurally safe. Uh, and. In. Often what is awful cases of the property there's so. Those people have property reserves, that property they need to. Do the deconstruction or even the demolition, so keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions, members of council? I'll start again.
I want to take a minute and please update my colleagues here in council on some of the work being done. Regarding moving the Wasco Lake Watershed Management Council staff over to the city dog, we touched on it, but I don't think it's addressed in council. Um, lately. The Wasco Lake Watershed Management Council membership, which includes myself, Wasco Supervisor Ed Wadner, County Chairperson Emily Nina Coleman. At the meeting with um, city leadership, including Andrew Diver, our controller, Mary Beth Leeson, our corporate corporation council study. To situate these positions within the city structure. We're anticipating and addressing any related questions or actions that this change might initiate. Um, for example, we're redoing the Wasco Lake Watershed Management bylaws to ensure that they will reflect and support this new structure. And it will allow a renewed commitment to the vision and mission of the Wasco Lake Watershed Management Council. Which will remain an independent nonprofit, Prop one, C three, so this would include the executive director and the watershed inspectors. So just wanted to, I also forwarded you a resolution that was passed recently at a town of Wasco board meeting. Um, they just sort of expressed their support in this exploration, we have signed nothing, there's a lot of things to take into account, so it'll take several months for us to meet. So uh, if you have any questions on the resolution I sent you or anything else?
Even else? Have a couple items, first. I received an email from the New York Conference of Mayors yesterday regarding arterial maintenance funding. The organization is putting together a letter to send to Governor Hokel, and ask for a signature, so I want to read a portion of that letter, this is something that we've worked on for several years. There are currently thirty-seven cities that have arterial maintenance agreements with the state, under these agreements, the cities maintain designated. State-owned arterial roads and highways, and the state compensates those cities for the service. However, the reimbursement rate of eighty-five cents per square yard paid to our city is, does not have been increased since nineteen eighty-seven. These maintenance costs, like every other municipal expense, we experienced substantial increases during the last thirty-seven years. Consequently, the amount of money that we are currently receiving for the service as well will what we expect. To address the shortfall, we are asking you to include in your executive budget an inflationary adjustment from the current eighty-five cents per square yard. Of pavement to two dollars and forty-seven cents per square yard, and additional twenty cents per square yard for pavement located in populated regions. This amount, this amounts to an additional state expenditure of approximately twenty million dollars. However, we are confident that the state is responsible for maintaining these highways, the fiscal exposure which are seen in reimbursement and paid under this proposal. Currently, we receive one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars a year. Um, under the proposal, we would receive four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars a year, which is an increase of three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. I did sign that and send it back tonight, so we'll be represented there. Uh, on Monday, we had our annual Veterans Day ceremony. Um, I want to thank the public that took the time out of their day to attend, I'm going to acknowledge some folks who were instrumental in making that happen, first the formal city staff. Um, for coming in and making sure that part was presentable, and then it was set up for the event. Jerry Winslow, who serves our master ceremonies. Vietnam Veterans Association number seven oh four, Chaplain Jerry Fulmer, for delivering the invocation and the benediction. Members of Sweet House, Sweet House key, Flapetchnik Post thirteen twenty-four, for the rifle volley. Local student and boy scout Ethan Jensen for playing tabs, and for his, uh, boy scouts who attended the ceremony as well. Kevin Swab from the Kew County Veterans Agency for his words. Retired United States Air Force Technical Sergeant Tom Janatino for his inspirational speech. And I'd like to congratulate retired Marine John I for being awarded the Kew County Veteran Service. And then following up on the city manager's report of property that was demolished, simply one, Bracken Street. Received a card in the office today, it said, from the people who live on Bracken Street, the loving of Brett. Dear everyone involved in tearing down a purple condemned house of Bracken Street, we all live here, and you made us all a lot happier, the Bracken Street game. And it's signed by all the neighbors, and I just wanted to share that with everybody that, you know, this work doesn't go unnoticed, and it doesn't. Moving on, council resolution number one twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, requesting the governor of state legislature to provide support for continued and increased state aid. For local governments in the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six New York State budget, who are the sponsor. Counselor.
Council Resolution one twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, whereas until two thousand and twenty-four, cities, villages, and towns. Did not receive an increase in unrestricted state aid. Which is also known as aid incentives to municipalities, also known as aid funding. In fifteen years. Significantly impacting the ability to provide essential services to residents. Whereas after prolonged period without financial support, the local government finally received an increase of fifty million dollars in the unrestricted aid. In the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five New York State budget. Whereas the mayor, members of city councils express, express their gratitude to the governor and the state legislature for the fifty million dollar increase. In unrestricted state aid, recognizing it as a positive step towards addressing long-standing funding challenges. Whereas the state has referred to this new aid as temporary municipal assistance. Suggesting that such increase may not continue jeopardizing the sustainability of crucial municipal programs and services. Whereas property tax cap further limits the ability of local governments to properly fund programs and services that residents need. Whereas increased and ongoing state aid for local governments. Is filed for maintaining infrastructure, public safety, housing, and municipal services. And whereas the challenges of inflation, the increasing cost of labor supplies, the end of extraordinary federal aid. Only to accentuate the need for consistent and predictable funding, to effectively plan for the future. And meet the growing need of the residents, and now therefore be a result. That the Auburn City Council calls upon the governor and state legislature to commit to continuing the additional fifty million dollars in unrestricted aid. In the upcoming two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six state budget and be on. And be a further result, the Auburn City Council urges state officials to recognize the need for a long-term plan that ensures consistent and predictable increases. In financial support for local governments to keep faced with inflation. And be a further result that a copy of the resolution be sent to the governor, our state legislative representatives and New York State Conference of Mayors.
Any questions or discussion? Just I would acknowledge, now I'm getting in front of this and. Initiating this resolution across the city, while we wait on the governor to present our executive budget.
Counselor Ken.
Yes.
Counselor Overstreet Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Clarkville.
Hi.
Mayor.
First presentation this evening, uh, city assessments.
Obviously, getting that set up, my name is Jeannie Herring, I'm the assessor for the city of Auburn, I want to thank the mayor and the council members for letting me do this presentation tonight. Hopefully it won't be too dry and be a little interesting.
Assistant of engineers.
First, I want to talk about the inventory update sheets that we've been mailing out. To all the single-family homeowners, this is a pretty standard thing that most municipalities do, especially before rebuild. It allows the property owner to see what we have in our file, they can cross off things, add things, update whatever they see that is wrong.
Just gonna ask you to kind of try to speak. Into the a little bit more.
Okay, any updates or changes they make to this sheet? We are not going to change their assessment for two thousand twenty five based on these changes, we want them to trust us. To tell us the truth. But we will have accurate data going forward, going into the two thousand twenty six reveal. Alright, the state encourages municipalities to do these data mailers. Uh, when we do a reveal, they give us state aid. And there's a bunch of criteria we need to be to get the maximum state aid. They pay us between two and five dollars parcel. Uh, twenty twenty two, we received thirty, over thirty eight thousand dollars, which is not the maximum, we should have, we have over nine thousand parcels. We could have received forty five thousand and change. And they don't really like to share why for. What happened and why you didn't get the maximum, but potentially it could be because we did not do data mailers. I know they like updated pictures. Uh, we meet all the criteria as far as ratios and and things like that, but data mailers was missing, so hopefully this year or in two thousand twenty six. Will get a bigger reimbursement. Alright, so far we've sent out. About three thousand mailers, we received five hundred and fifty back already. So people are are being very cooperative with it. I've received thank you notes. Believe it or not, that we that we're doing this, that they have the opportunity. And um, and there's no penalty if you don't return it. But that then leaves us to use our best judgment. You know, if you don't give us the information, we're gonna look at what we have. And come to our own conclusions, so it's best if the property owner can give us their information first things. Any? Questions about that? Alright, the equalization rate. It seeks to measure the relationship of locally assessed values to an ever changing real estate market. Okay, what's important to know is that equalization rates are determined by the state. We don't determine them in our office. So what we do determine is assessed value. Okay? The state estimates the market value. So we do the total assessed value. The state does the market value. Which then equals an equalization rate. So what I do, I'm not sure how, like I work with this every day. So I understand it, I'm not sure how well other, that don't, that don't work with it often understand it. So I did a, a simple example. So these are the municipalities that contribute to the Auburn School District levy. Alright, so I have this example that. We have a hundred thousand dollar assessed value house in these five. Uh, different um municipalities, they all have different equalization rates. But if we just took it at taxable value, everyone would pay seventeen dollars and ninety four cents per thousand. Alright? Without the EAC rates involved. So you'll see that. A house in Owasco assessed for a hundred thousand is really worth full value, a hundred and ninety six thousand. They're going to pay the same taxes as a house assessed in Fleming for a hundred thousand. With a full value of a hundred thousand. So that's not fair, and that's why we need equalization rates. Because we all have different levels of assessment. Alright. So in contrast, this is the actual Auburn school budget. Spreadsheet where they calculated the tax rates. So you see our taxable value with our current year equalization rate at eighty eight percent. Gives us a full market value of one point four billion dollars. And then we do that across the board. We get our total full market value. And then we can calculate what percentage of the levy. You know, belongs to Auburn, just a little over fifty nine percent. And so that now we know how much of the levy Auburn's responsible for, then we can calculate a rate. Does that? Make sense? Okay. Level of assessment, that is something that is determined by my office. So this is what the level of assessment is going to be for two thousand twenty five. So what this is telling us, that residential properties from. July first, two thousand twenty three. That sold to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, and they're good arms length sales. That the sale price. The assessment was seventy four percent of the sale price. Alright, same logic for the commercial. The assessment for these commercial properties that sold were seventy six percent of what they sold for. Right? Most of our role is residential eighty percent. So we did the weighted mean and it comes down to our weighted mean. Level of assessment is seventy two. Seventy two percent. So we have a five percent tolerance. We can go with, so for my level of assessment, we can go between seventy eight or sixty eight and seventy five. And we want that percent to met, match our RAR, our residential assessment ratio, which is just the residential portion of that of that calculation. So that's how we've determined that number. And so I have already reported to the state that for two, two thousand twenty five, we are going to be at a seventy five percent LOA. Which hopefully then the state looks at that and they will make that our equalization rate. Alright, we're at eighty eight percent this year, we're gonna be dropping to seventy five, so you'll see how we will get that bigger piece of pie. Of the school levy perhaps. But there's so many things that influence that, that. It's hard to forecast what happens with that number. Like I know this year, the town of Owasco is doing a revale, so hopefully they're gonna gain a little bit of that tax burden. Barely, not. Any questions? Alright, if the level of assessment drops. Taxpayers will not be paying their fair share of their taxes, meaning that some people are going to be overpaying. And some will be underpaying. And that's because different houses, house types are appreciating at different levels through the city. For example, ranches, small ranches. Are, you know, double in value almost. Since two thousand twenty two. Also sales in different neighborhoods, we have five different neighborhoods we look at in the city of Auburn. Certain neighborhoods are selling at a higher rate than others. And again, different property types, commercial versus residential. They sell, they appreciate at different levels. So reassessment brings that all back into equity. Right, and and it's also easier to explain things to taxpayers when we're at a hundred percent. They see the eighty eight percent on their tax bill and a different number, they get confused. When we do a reassessment, there's a typical bell curve effect. So you'll see on the left hand side, those will be people that. Their taxes are going to go down. Perhaps they were over assessed. In two thousand twenty two. Or their house and neighborhood aren't appreciating as much as the other parts of the city. And again. On the right hand side, maybe those people tax will increase. For the exact opposite reasons. But most people should see their taxes remain about the same. How do I go back?
The second one.
Alright, so this is an example, so right now, these are the actual numbers for our two thousand twenty four. You'll see the city taxable. At one point two six seven billion. And then the city tax levy and the CIP levy ended up with a tax rate of eleven. Dollars and twenty eight cents per thousand. So the city tax on a hundred thousand dollar house is one thousand one hundred twenty eight dollars. So what we're looking at for two thousand twenty six is a fifty five percent increase. In assessed values. So if you take our city taxable. And increase it by fifty five percent. You'll see it's almost two billion dollars. And if the levies stay about the same. The new city tax rate would be seven dollars and twenty eight cents. And so the city tax on a hundred thousand dollar house. Oh, now, now it's a hundred and fifty five thousand dollar house because we had the increase in assessment. The taxes are again, one thousand one hundred twenty dollars. Does that make sense?
Can you explain a little bit how you get the assessed value?
Sure.
And why it might change from where you're starting?
It's all based on sales. That's, we have. Right now, I'm working with about two hundred and ninety sales that have happened. Since July first, two thousand twenty three. We go in, I, we break it down by neighborhood, by house type. I start with our neighborhood one, that is our most economical neighborhood. And I look at an old style house, I'm like, okay, how are they selling? And right now they're selling at seventy seven dollars per square foot. And then we add in land value and any amenities that do have to do with that, then I go to neighborhood two, houses sell a little more. For a little more based upon the sales that have occurred in that area. We find that those sell for twelve dollars more per square foot. And so we add twelve dollars for neighborhood two. It's, it's all based on sales, and I can do another presentation with more detail. Exactly how we build our model, we build our cost model, we do our sales compares and.
We're two years into the most recent revival.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I look at property transfers, they were just like everybody else says. So those are very current assessments. And I'm seeing. Probably nine, nines out of ten. Houses selling for much higher than what that assessed value is, so I think it would be very beneficial to do a presentation like that is. If you look at the two thousand twenty four city taxable rate of one point two billion. We're predicting four years later, one point nine billion, that's, that's a huge jump, and I think it would be beneficial to explain that to people.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I wanted to point out, we had something in two thousand twenty two, our city tax rate across city, county and school. It was forty dollars and thirty seven cents per thousand. After the reveal in two thousand twenty two, it dropped to thirty five dollars and thirty nine cents. So because of the increase in taxable value. The city tax rates went down. And that was with a twenty something percent increase. Alright, what happens if we don't do a reassessment? Uh, it won't have any effect on the city taxes because we're all at the same. Level of assessment, so it's, it will be still the calculation of the levy, you know, divided by the taxable value. The equalization comes into play when they're calculating school taxes and county taxes. Alright? And so the equalization rate will keep it as fair as possible to the residents of the city of Auburn. But what happens is the equalization rate drops. It creates inequity in our role. So some people are overpaying, some people are underpaying, that's the purpose of a reassessment. Is to make the role equitable again.
I understand is we've been doing the four year revival for about thirty years. Is that pretty standard across the state, a four year period?
That's. I don't know if it's standard, but that's what they would like, at least.
So it's kind of accepted. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Next presentation is BioSalts project overflow retention facility design updated by Mr. Matt Marco from Brown Paulwell. Mr. Seth Jensen. Welcome, Colonel.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, uh, Mr. Mason kicks things off here with the presentation. Uh, only again, my name is Seth Jensen, I'm the utilities city of Auburn. As. Mayor said, Matt Marco is with us here tonight to present. With the presentation, our overflow retention facility project design as an update to council from. What they're equal, potentially when we met, uh, to to kind of kick it off and and begin. The design process for adding the overflow retention facility into our BioSalts project, and we thought at this time it would take a moment. To provide a brief update to council. I have a public on our existing project as well. Who's that working? Very hard all summer long and. We can see just in a few short months, slide is in front of you. How much progress we've seen over the last three months. Particularly the last being. Approximately three months ago and then to the right. Illustrating what the site looks like just a few days ago. A aerial shot. So we, we took it upon ourselves with this project to. Add a small contract to the construction, administration, construction inspection contract. I heard from Paul Maltin Vista. Does that both documentation and show flyovers at a periodic time interval. And those photos can link to our design drawings, so as. We move into as built record drawings, we'll be able to recall photos at. Every step of the way and all reference to the drawings, so from an as built. Standpoint is extremely valuable tool for our staff to hand order. The engineer current development, Brown Paulwell was developing the as built drawings exactly. So I'll turn it over to Matt, I've got to kick things off and jump off in the middle.
Thanks Seth, it's good to see everyone this evening, and I'd also like to recognize our resident inspector, Paul Tenny, who's here tonight. Uh, to join us, um, he'll be taking notes, see if Seth and I got it right. And so, one of the things that that's really important that I think everybody wants to know is. Is the project on budget and is it on schedule, and the answer to that is yes. Uh, this pie chart uh, kind of shows about how much. Uh, spent to date we are, so we're about fifty five percent overall on the total project, if we look at. The individual contracts, you can see the general contract. Uh, is leading the pack, if you will, followed closely by the electrical. And then the plumbing and HVAC are are lagging behind, and that's typical for big projects like this. There's about sixty five construction workers on the site daily, uh, that varies, of course, day to day, but. Uh, it's a busy site, a lot of people uh, show up in the morning before sunrise now. Uh, with, with the hour change and they're working just about up until the time the sun goes down, so. Uh, the focus is getting as much of the exterior work completed before winter comes and they'll, they'll button up these buildings uh, to. Work through the winter on the interiors uh, as much as they can, so they're very, they're working very aggressively to get to that point. Uh, with the weather change and, and we all know it can happen at any moment, right? So uh, we're keeping our regulators, DEC, EFC as a funding agency informed on the progress and uh. Uh, we've actually got a workshop uh, scheduled uh, for the ORF project next week, so there's a lot of activity on the BioSalts project. And what we're here to talk about today. This, this picture kind of, uh, you, you'll remember, we've shown this in the past, the one on the left is the um. The model of the buildings as it was designed, and on the right is a picture, as Seth said, just from a few days ago. So you can kind of see how it's starting to take shape. And this is, these tall towers are digesters. That'll uh, uh, break down our, our, our sewage sludge. Um, this, this one is almost complete, uh, there's some exterior work to. Um, this, this one is almost complete. Uh, there's some exterior work to be done, but it's at its full height. Uh, the second digester to the right here is, is not uh, just underway. Construction on that is just underway now. And then this is uh, secondary digester. So these are primary digesters, one and two. The secondary digester here will be uh, drawn into this building and this is where all the processing and drying will be. And then the dry product will be stored out here under this canopy building. Uh, and all the pumps and controls that move all these uh, liquids and solids around are in this renovated building here. Uh, just a picture of some uh, uh, old blowers that have served a, a good life. Uh, they've been uh, sent to pasture and the new blower system is on the right and I wish I could give you some sound from this uh, slide, but uh, the new blowers are much quieter. And when you take a tour out there, uh, you'll appreciate uh, the, this room was almost intolerable to work in and, and now the new blowers are much quieter, which is also means they're much more efficient. And that's the really neat thing about the new blowers. But really what we're here to talk about today is the ORF project, the overflow retention facility. And well, why is it needed? Well, uh, you know, we're sitting here today and, and of course the, the plant's kind of got this whole campus here uh, of, of sprawling uh, facilities, if you will, and it, it handles about eight M G D, million gallons a day on average. Uh, but the flows can surge at times of wet weather, up to as much as fifty million gallons a day. Uh, so we need systems that can protect that existing infrastructure when flows go above what the peak flow of this plant is rated for, which is twenty five M G D. And so when you get to that twenty five M G D point and we get more than that flow, we need a place to send it and that's where the ORF comes in. It protects all that equipment and the environment by first of all capturing that flow and, and providing the storage. In some cases, if it's a small storm, it can be sent back to the head of the plant and fully treated. But in some cases where it's a really large flow, um, it'll, it'll treat that flow uh, before it is spilled out into the river uh, with, with some chemicals and we'll talk about that in the new facility. Uh, just to show where we're talking about, it's this part of the footprint of the facility. And so it's activated during these wet weather events, you know, usually really intense rainfalls as opposed to long, steady rainfalls. That's what really triggers these ORFs uh, due to the combined nature of the combined sewer system. And uh, they, they provide treatment just by capturing it. The, the, a lot of the material in that sewage will settle out. Uh, but as I mentioned, uh, it's also distant, if it is to continue beyond the capacity of the storage and is uh, is to overflow to the river, um, because it's got to go somewhere. Uh, we want to make sure that that's disinfected. So we'll hit it with sodium hypochlorite, that'll remove all the bacteria. And then we'll hit it with one more chemical that removes the chlorine because we don't want to be putting chlorinated water into our rivers. They're not swimming pools. And ultimately uh, we'll, we'll have a, a better product for the, for the environment. Uh, that these protections of treatment, if you will, layers of treatment. And so unfortunate part is we talked about in April, the facility's outlived its useful life and uh, we applied for some grants. And uh, we're going to replace this. This just gives you a perspective of how old this facility is that I showed you in that previous picture. Um, it's, it's this portion is the tank. In nineteen thirty six, this photo was taken. So uh, it's, it's, it's given us a good value over the years. And we looked at this with an engineering report back in two thousand and twenty three. Uh, we used that engineering report to get a grant uh, for the city. Uh, the, the grant included a commitment that this facility would not only be rebuilt, but increased in, in size slightly to provide that little bit of extra storage. We kind of sweetened the pot. Uh, and we hope, uh, we can expect that's probably why we got such a good grant out of this perhaps. Uh, and we looked at the alternatives that would uh, satisfy uh, uh, the requirements here. And you'll remember when we talked in April about those four alternatives that uh, we considered. Alternative two affectionately, if you will, is the one that we selected. It's, it's building out in this footprint to the south of the existing primary facility and administrative building. And this is where I'll turn it over to Seth to talk about our approach.
I haven't found Seth's good role. I hate to step in and fumble through his next couple of slides, but as we presented back in, in April, um, the idea of executing this ORF uh, project can potentially be done most efficiently uh, from a timing standpoint um, and from a cost standpoint uh, by completing the design uh, to about uh, to, to a construction level, but not to a full bid level. And then provide uh, the design to our existing contractors who are continuing to um, do, do good work um, for us and uh, we haven't had any significant issues with so far um, to, to develop price for this. We began the design process in July. We're in, in that thirty percent design stage right now. Kind of halfway between the blue dot and the orange shot. Um, that was the point we'll get to ninety percent um, or to a, a spot where uh, we can set down our pencils and provide the scope of work to our existing contractors as well as the D E C and E F C to review the, the design to ensure that it meets standards and that it's permitted. Um, and get, get a price and compare that price against um, our engineering estimates. By doing that, we avoid multiple months and the potential to um, you know, have to pay for additional mobilization, additional bonding and insurance, uh, so on and so forth. It can be uh, very expensive. Many of the design uh, components that are within uh, the scope of work of the ORF are similar to design components in our existing project. So um, there's excavation and concrete installation pipe. So a lot of those specifications that are in the existing contract are transferable. And all the submittals and the time that it's taken to submit on a four inch ductal iron pipe um, has been done. So we can point to that. There's great efficiency in that. Um, at the same time, there's the efficiency in um, our engineering contract. Um, and the costs associated with construction inspection. Uh, if we're able to start this work in the spring of next year, that efficiency will be found in Paul Tenny's time, our inspector who's already on site uh, performing inspection um, on a daily basis. Um, because the contractors are there, the engineers are there, the inspectors are there. Um, we're not having to pay twice. Or some of those services. With the idea of potential completion coming in right around the same time, just shortly thereafter, what we were anticipating our bio solids project to come in. Being able to take advantage of that, that window of time is, will, will save the city potentially millions of dollars. Um, if we are able to come to an agreement on price for change orders. So the quick overview of our, our budget, um, as, as we presented uh, a few months ago, uh, we were thinking that this work project would come in from the fourteen million dollar mark. Um, as we've started and it's still pretty early on in the design stages, uh, we're, we're thinking that that was a fairly conservative number and will likely uh, be able to tighten that up um, even more by way of the efficiencies gained. Um, and then also through being as frugal as possible with the decisions we're making with the remaining funding. So we currently have project authorization uh, in a contract with E F C for a ninety four million dollar project. We've been covered eighty one million dollars through engineering contracts uh, that, that include the ORF. And then construction contracts that include the base work of the bio solids project, leaving us with about thirteen million dollars remaining in uh, occupation. So you can see that right now we're, we're targeting um, a zero increase to what we're currently authorized through this project. It's time to have a break at our funding, our, our state level to expand. So we're gonna, we're recommending at this point to continue to push on with the design effort. Um, continue to communicate with city council as we get milestones from that and provide additional information as engineering estimates become um, more clear and available. And if you're talking about this project, the other thing that I wanted to draw your attention to is kind of the overall scheme of the funding and how, how it's breaking down is we started this off with a two million dollar bond um, to do initial design work. Um, so that, that is city bonded sewer fund. Obligation. Uh, we wrote, received a nine million dollar grant um, through W E M. Um, and then last year, uh, with the addition of the ORF project, we received much better water quality uh, points and received a twenty five million dollar grant through Bill. In addition to that twenty five million dollar grant, we also were able to take advantage of twenty five million dollars to zero percent. Financing the remaining dollar amount through very low interest subsidized bonds. There's a couple of different ones in there. Um, but that's generally the makeup of the financing of this, of this project. We do have some other opportunities out there that we're exploring at the infant level at this point, around IRA funds that could be available because of the digesters utilizing the gas um, to, to run our, our dryer, other um, other equipment onsite might set us up for the ability to receive um, a credit from the federal government at the end of this project. We're still looking into that. There's a huge range between like one and twelve million dollars in potential credit to come back and also be utilized as an offset onto what we need to finance for this project or utilize some of the debt. So that's quite the, quite the menu of different options out there. And if I was creative, I think it's our grants department has ever got to see us to the point that we're at right now. So.
Can I ask a question?
I didn't call Christina before tonight.
It's pretty simple. The, the two related is the I R, like first, if you're welcome. Are those contracts signed?
They are fully executed, signed and in our possession. And we're in the middle right now. We wouldn't be able to do this project without that being signed because you saw on the earlier slides, our, our burn rate right now is billions of dollars a month. And if we sign contracts, we're able to invoice or set those first, we're simply stated, see, but once that is there, not just yourself. Kind of scenes. But they're just, they're crushing it on the, on the backside that we don't even see to make this possible. So everything is, and it's a place where it should be and it's where we want.
So I get to talk about the exciting stuff coming up here. So um, those of you familiar with the area, uh, this is Bradley Street. And this is a driveway that goes around uh, the back of the facility. Here's the administration building right here. And down here is where the new ORF is going to be. So uh, uh, it's going to be i- in that green space uh, to the south of the driveway. Um, there'll be a chemical storage building which um, has two chemical storage rooms and an electric room inside of it. There'll be uh, some flow metering that you'll see uh, up above ground here, uh, protecting with some bollards from uh, the driveway. Um, we'll add a little additional parking for this area uh, for, for both staff and visitors, which is kind of tight right now. Uh, on any given day, uh, uh, most folks are parking out here in the overflow area. And then um, this area is also part of the infrastructure of the facility because trucks that make deliveries uh, to the wastewater treatment plant uh, on a routine basis, uh, haulers and, and large tractor trailers come down here and use this turnaround so they can keep the trucks out of the neighborhood nearby. A little more detail on what that big blue uh, square or uh, shape was on the previous slide. Um, this is uh, what the ORF looks like in, in a little more detail. And so the flow will come in by pipeline uh, to the influent box uh, and be distributed evenly throughout uh, what looks like three different tanks. It's all actually one tank. I have another view that'll provide that a little uh, more clearly, but it spreads itself out to the tank and settles, collects and settles in that zone. And then eventually uh, leaves the tank by a, a weir box uh, that uh, is, is uh, allowing the water to uh, rise and, and go over the top of the weir and out of that settling zone and into the disinfection zone where it turns, uh, this is actually a serpentine tank, comes down around the corner here, turns down this way and does the same thing again, giving about four hundred linear feet of, of, uh, so what they call plug flow, uh, so unmix flow while that hypochlorite chemical, that chlorine is mixing with that final effluent to remove all the bacteria and pathogens before it's pumped out of the, out of the tank into an area where we dechlorinate. Again, as I told you, we'll remove that chlorine so that it can then flow out to the river by gravity. Uh, one thing that we do, there's up here, you can't see it uh, right now. There's at the end of the project, uh, at the end of the uh, storm event, we've got to de-water that tank. It's now full. It's done its job. The storm has passed. We send that flow back to the head of the plant for full treatment. So we pump it back. And so this, this graphic will give you a little more, uh, now that we looked at it in plan view in a simple way. Uh, these are both the same, same. Just at the head of the plant. So just a little different graphic. You can see it's a little more complicated uh, structurally, if you will, than the um, plan view that you just looked at. Just a few pictures of what this would look like in other facilities, uh, because you know, in my mind's eye, I look at that uh, two dimensional image and I see this, uh, but not everybody maybe sees this. Uh, so you know, these, these baffle walls allow some of the flow uh, to be distributed equally across the area. That's just important. When it comes in from a single pipe, we want to spread it out. Blow it, have it flow easily so that the velocities are low and the settles, the solids settle out and, and end up on the floor and we flush those back after the rain event. We don't want to push those onto the river, right? We want to have baffle walls. So anything that does get by the screening of the main plant, these very high flows can sometimes be quite a bit of stuff. Gets carried along with the wastewater. We want to keep that out of the weir. And so we'll have these baffle walls. There's already something similar to this in the existing ORF. We'll be replicating that and improving it. And then here's that, here's that effluent weir box. It's kind of floating up there in space. It's supported, of course, structurally. But the water, when it fills this tank rises and it gets to the point where the tank's now full and it spills over the weir from both sides. Uh, and, and, and by doing that, we actually get twice the length of the weir. The velocities are very low, leaving the solids behind and the flow, the water, the cleaner water coming out. And then, and then moving on to the disinfection. Uh, when, when done with this event and we got to clean this tank, right now the operator's spent a tremendous amount of time and labor uh, trying, trying to get this ORF tank ready for the next event. It's not glamorous work. A lot of hard, hard labor, to be honest with you. The new facility will be, have all the modern technologies that you know, you, you don't have in your old facility. These are called tipping buckets and what they do is they, they just fill with water and when they get full to a point where uh, they become uh, uh, unbalanced, they'll drop the water and flush the tank out at the end. Um, if you've ever been to a water theme park, they've got a similar thing up there and it dumps, uh, you know, it's just a, a running pipe, if you will, that will operate with a motorized uh, valve here that'll turn these things on and off. And to demonstrate that, I got a little bit of a video and I'm always worried that a video will never work when you need it to, but uh, we'll see if this happens here. But we'll see if this happens here. So this is a view from down inside the tank of what you can expect when that tipping bucket finally gets on the full and releases its flow. And so the operators will no longer be down there with brooms or squeegees. This is actually a brick with a wire tied to it. And you'll see what happens to that when that flushing wave comes through. If it can handle a brick, it can handle just about anything that's going to be in that tank. And you see it's pretty clean. This is pretty clear, clean water. We use clean water to flush that out. And then all the sediment is collected and pumped back to the head of the plant. So that's what you're getting for your investment here. The disinfection process, it's pretty straightforward. It's just flowing through that tank. It's, it's a good dose of chlorine in there. But there's ways to do this that are smarter than, and, and involved in the design to make sure that we don't have this short circuiting that's shown in these graphics and moves the flow evenly throughout this tank and, and provides the, the regulatory requirements for disinfection. In our chemical feed building, it'll be very similar to a lot of the other buildings on the site that we've been building through the biosalads project, et cetera. There'll be a room for hypochlorite, a room for sodium bisulfate. And this room will have all the electric equipment and even an operator. That's the place where the operators will go to operate this facility. There'll be a terminal there with a computer that they can operate other parts of the plant from this location. Just like they'll be able to do up the other parts of the plant that we're building in the biosalage where we looked at those digesters, they'll be able to be up there and operate this part of the plant. So wherever the operators are, because these ORF events never happen at a convenient time, right? And, and, and we want to make sure that the operators have all the flexibility to do what they intended to do that day before the skies open and created a, a wet weather event. Just some schematics of what this building will look like. These are early schematics. In the next week, I said, we're going to have a workshop. These drawings will have evolved a little bit more. But from a simplicity standpoint, this is what the building will look like. When we come back and talk to you next time, those will be evolved. And then when we're done with the project, building the new ORF and it's ready to go, we're going to tie it into the old piping, the existing piping. And we're going to, we're going to put that into service, but we're going to demolish the old ORF. And so this area is, is the footprint of the old ORF. It's actually connected to this building by an underground tunnel. Here's all the tankage. The tankage, what you see here is actually even more of it underground. There's an old, there's a pipe galley here, a gallery here. And there's a, a pump station here to de-water these tanks now. All this infrastructure will be raised to, to grade, topsoil and seeded. And the facility will now have that extra footprint to utilize for future investments in technology that may be required in the future. And so that's pretty much the simple answer to what we're up to. Any questions?
Yeah. Just one question. So you talked about how the operators could be in different locations on site and, and run the equipment. Is that a closed system so that you have to be on site to do it? So that nobody could ferociously get in from like another area to the internet and affect our, our water treatment systems?
That's correct. Yeah, the wastewater treatment plant has its own internal fiber network. This solely within the plant itself for the skate operations. We have a random price system too, but those two are completely segregated.
Thank you.
Good question. I just want to thank you for continuing to make wastewater treatment interesting and fun. Expensive.
Speaking of fun. Certainly love to have you back down to site for a tour at some point. So they'll throw some dates out sometimes. See if we can connect because it looks a lot different than it did this summer. Same personal protective equipment, maybe jackets.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Oh, it wasn't secretly awesome.
Quest for effective social sharing. Area, two items related to sale of real property. You, question also. One regarding current litigation, I would include you asked about the relationship with regulations. And the second is, I'm in this room. The motion for effective session. Please call.
Thank you. Session at six then. Councilor Ken?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
The ultimate raise. Well deserved.
Thanks, Seth.
Have a good night.
How's it going? Since I've seen you. Thanks, thanks. You're quicker than me.
How was your last?
I had a, of course, my other.
It's good seeing you. Good day.